Good evening and welcome to the November 8th School Board Meeting for the Litchfield School District. I would like to call the meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you. All right, so the purpose for tonight's meeting was for us to have a little bit more time with the budget and be able to start to make some cuts or have some discussion about reductions or increases. I guess that's always a potential, right?
Absolutely.
And so that we can use some of our meeting. So we have enough time next week on the 15th. So for tonight, we are waiting for Mr. Shoemaker to make it over here from his parent teacher conference, but she'll be here any minute. But until then, there were some motions that we feel like can be dealt with rather quickly. So I'm going to ask Doug or Holly to give us some information about the rates coming in for health insurance, rather than the placeholder that was in there. Can you confirm what that is?
Yeah, absolutely. So we put in 10% placeholder, our rates came in at 6.2%, which is very favorable compared to the average they were saying was around 9.7. So at this point, what I was going to ask you guys to do is make a reduction to the bottom line numbers that I put in the Fund 10 salary and benefits budget and then food service salary and benefits budget. And then at some point, like Doug gives me the okay, we'll go in and actually put actuals into each line, so you guys will see those.
Okay, but for now, it's a bottom line reduction, then you'll allocate it appropriately.
Yep, I'm ready to do that whenever I can, but yes.
Okay. So I will make a motion to reduce the bottom line of salaries and benefits for 92, there's going to be two different motions, for $90,388.
I will second that. Are there any questions? Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, abstain, abstain, 3-0-0.
And then additionally, there's a food service savings on the, on the health insurance of $4,427. I will make a motion to reduce the food service salary and benefits by $4,427.
And I will second that. Any questions? Comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, 3-0-0.
So this is, this is great. I was on the call with the BA today, and there's a lot of people with health trusts who are getting 15%, 18%, 25% increases. So when we talk about 6.2%, I think it shows that the plan that we're on, it makes sure that people are responsive enough that it's not excessive costs as well. So I think that's great.
A welcome to update this morning. Thank you very much.
Yeah. That is good news.
Madam Chairman, I think there's another item that we'll all collectively agree upon.
Okay.
There was a question asked during the special services budget last, last night on, it's specifically special services, page three. There was a question that I had asked about two-room AC units required for $700. Ms. Fowler has confirmed that those units are effective and working properly and that that $700 can be removed from the budget, but any other comments?
No.
So I will make a motion to reduce special services, specifically line 734 on page three, by $700.
I will second that. Just a general question, what would happen if a student, a new student came in with a need for an air conditioning unit? Is that something we would just fund from the regular budget?
We would find money, we didn't transfer it over, so we would definitely purchase it. And that's one of those tricky things about, you know, budgeting eight months out, but there, there's always those things that come up and we, and we find money for that.
Okay. All right, there is a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor of reducing the special services, line 734, by $700, is that what the amount was?
$700.
$700, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain, not by, 3-0-0. All right, so that is one that we can work with. Typically with our budget meetings, there is some discussion. You had a spreadsheet I think you did.
Yeah.
Do you feel comfortable going over that?
Yeah. Doug is not able to present it, right?
Well, let me, if I can find it again, I can send it to, or if you want to send it to Chris.
Oh, Chris, you're, you're.
I can, yeah.
Yeah, you can do that. So basically, it's just a look at per pupil spending across districts in New Hampshire. So we actually, I have been going on the 2021 school year, school year data up to this point, but it looks like the DOE has the 2122 data. So I shared that with the board and with Mr. Totten and my, just as a comparison to see how we are doing, how we measure up according to that. If you could share that, that would be great. I'm having a personal.
Yep, he got that.
Thanks.
I think it's the second tab.
So the first tab is just the, the information directly from the New Hampshire DOE. They list all of the per pupil spending. It's alphabetical by district and they break out elementary, middle, and high school. And then the total is the fourth column. So what, what my husband is fond of doing is doing an analysis. So he does this for work all the time, he's a data guy. So he, on the second tab, you can see just, he's taken out just the districts that have K, that service students in grades K to 12. And so he has ranked them now in the spreadsheet sorted by their average pupil, per pupil spending in 20, to 20, 21 to 22, in descending order. So the most, most per pupil spending, we see, you know, almost, it's $29,544 in son of eight. So if you look at this list, Litchfield is number 44 out of 55 K to 12 districts. That puts us, the total average per pupil spending is $17,835.93. So you can, if you can scroll down just a little bit more, you can see the 11 districts that have lower per pupil spending than Litchfield are all bigger districts. They all have more schools, more enrollment than we have. Bigger school districts generally have lower per pupil spending because they benefit from economies of scale.
Yeah.
An admin position for a high school of 600 kids, if you divide that up among 600 kids, it costs less than if you divide that up among 400 kids, which is kind of how, how it works. So what, what I wanted to share with everybody tonight is that, you know, every budget season, we seem to start with the assumption that we're overspending. We are overpaying, we're wasteful, we don't have a lean budget. And I just wanted to point out that if you compare us to other K to 12 districts in New Hampshire in '21 and '22, there's a huge gap. So Dan went a little bit further, scroll up to the top. He found that the average per pupil spending is about $20,238.32. That's average K to 12 districts throughout the state. Litchfield at $17,835.93 is in the 21st percentile, that means almost 80% of other districts in New Hampshire that service K to 12 kids spend more than we do. If you were to divide that up among the Litchfield enrollment, which Doug has pointed out, I had included pre-K enrollment, so if we take that out, our enrollment is 1,201 students. The difference, our budget, if we spent at the average rate, our budget would be 2.885 million dollars more than what we are currently spending in Litchfield. That's to me the average per pupil spending in K to 12 districts. So when we talk about increases that are unsustainable, or, you know, purported to be unsustainable, or alluding to that there might be some fat in the budget that we're allowed to cut, I posit that there's a gap to make, to be made up here. And I think that districts who fund closer to the average, and I'm not saying we have to increase our budget by 2.88 million dollars by any means. I know, I understand that we have to, you know, live within our needs and, you know, deeply consider the taxpayers' needs and their ability to support our schools. I'm not saying that we need to increase our budget by that, but I think we need to, to start with an assumption that we are responsible with our tax dollars. We have a very, very, very lean budget of with not much room for reductions at this point. And, you know, I think it is resulting in, it's, I do think it is added detriment to our students and our staff. And I believe that schools who spend more than we do, or, you know, closer to average, are able to be more proactive in solving problems and meeting needs. And I think that, I've always felt that we are really good with some things, but being proactive isn't always one of them. We tend to wait until there's an issue and then say, what can we do to fix this issue? You know, so when we're looking at test scores that aren't where they need to be, or we're looking at behavior problems that are affecting our children's education, we need to be, we need more support and we need to try to strive to be more proactive. And I think the way that we do that is unfortunately by spending a little bit more on our budget and in hiring the people that we need to adequately run our district. So I think between, you know, sustained budget cuts below the cost of inflation, below increased costs, partner together with the advisory warrant article that we seem bound to follow, that we can't hire personnel without putting positions on a warrant article. I think we're severely handcuffing our school board in our district. So I will say that and leave that there for consideration.
Just a question. All of these districts include full day K?
I don't know.
It says K through 12, but I mean, that, if I go back to '21, '22, right, that would skew the numbers if they don't include full day K.
Skew it in what way?
Yeah.
Well, so we offered full day K, right? But if, it says K through 12, so I'm assuming they do, but it just seems like, given that's somewhat still a new program, right? Kindergarten, when was kindergarten?
But then presumably, they're spending more than us for a half-day program, even with only educating for half the day and for a half-day program.
I'm just wondering if our number is, is, is the right number, if for our town, we should be including K, if that's the right benchmark to all these other towns.
Our district does include K, so it's, I think it's spread, I mean, it's based on enrollment.
But if that number wasn't including K, it wouldn't be number D.
It would go the other way. Yeah.
I think most schools have full day K. And then, as was just discussed, if, if a school doesn't have full day K, their number's going to show up lower than ours.
Wouldn't it?
They would bring, decrease their costs.
Their, their cost per pupil would be up, wouldn't it be because they're spreading it out over fewer pupils?
No, they'd still have the same enrollment, they would just have half-day. They might even have more enrollment. So they'd have two classes, like, they'd have two classes where we have one class.
A and PM.
A and and PM. So for example, where I work.
We're looking at cost per pupil though, aren't we?
Right. So I think it's apples to apples because it's cost per pupil. I mean, the elementary, does that make sense?
It does, except that you, you can cut some of your salary line in half.
What?
So it actually lowers it. So you'd have one teacher for 44 kids instead of two teachers for 44, you know?
Right.
Because you have the A and PM.
Yeah, so we would actually, so.
So we'd be spending.
I don't think, at that point, it'd be negligible, you know, but if anything, there'd be a decrease in the salary line.
I don't know if you can trust, trust the Google, but as I look at the Google, I see four and a half pages of districts in New Hampshire that offer full-day kindergarten.
I believe, I looked at it when I was in my old district, and I think that there's down to seven that still only have half-day.
Yeah, there's not a lot. Yeah, I was just going to say, one.
All right, so I think that's really good background information for us to have as we sort of move forward. Andrew, you had some, a few things that you wanted to present to the board as well?
Yeah, and I'll, it's really for the benefit of Mr. Shoemaker, just to kind of go through some of the, some of the analysis that I've done. Can I steal another clip? Absolutely. And just for your benefit, right before you join, the board, you, Dave, and Sleep, the three of us approved a reduction in total of $95,558. And that's across three lines, two of which are salary and benefits for a decrease in health insurance rates, which came in earlier today. And the other is a $700 reduction to special services, which Mrs. Fowler also confirmed and agreed to.
Cool. Thank you.
You're welcome. So for the years that I've been looking at this budget, the exercise that we have now performed over the past couple of meetings is what I would refer to as a bottoms-up approach, right? We're going through literally line by line, page by page, 160 or so pages of this budget. We're going through it with a fine-tooth comb, trying to understand the district needs, which is what frankly we asked for, right? What that budget is, and as the board has seen, is this budget here in a soft version.
Okay.
Moving just across the various tabs in the worksheets I have here, we have the original that was sent to us that aligns to our budget finders. The next tab is, and I recognize this is small, but the next tab is essentially the exact same budget, but without all the detail. So it's just looking at the core, bold account numbers, okay? The bold account numbers. That way, we can take a tops-down approach, right? So we've gone bottoms-up, what do we learn and what does it show from a tops-down perspective, right? And that's really the exercise that this is. It's just a different view, maybe it's interesting, for me, it's interesting, I don't, I don't know about others. But Mr. Shoemaker, for your benefit, right, these long account numbers, the 10 digits of the account numbers represent a couple of different things. They represent the fund, we talk about Fund 10, so all of these will begin with 10 because that's the, that's the fund where it's, all, all this money's being operating, operated from. You have the location code, so is it SAU, is it GMS, LMS, DHS, et cetera? You have a function code, which is the next four digits, which further goes down a level of where the budget's actually hitting. And then you have an account code, which is the last three digits of, of the number that you see. The account code allows us to take that tops-down approach. It allows us to say, all right, for all the 272s and 580s, 272 and 580 is what we talk about every year, it's really what is the travel and what are the conferences and what's the total dollar amount across all 160 pages of this budget, right? So instead of taking it line by line, what do we see top-down and holistically across the budget? And that's what the various tabs essentially break out for the board, right? So I have a view on salary and benefits and just what that looks like across all the salary and benefit account numbers specifically in the budget. And we can see from FY '20 actual, all the way through FY '25 requested, what the trend has been. I have a breakout by location, same thing, where the location is more, are at school specific, right? What is being requested per each one of these locations? And I have it with and without salary and benefits, just so you can see that picture. I also have, you know, other areas that we've talked about, like electricity and fuel, and what's the trend, given all the increases in rates that everyone's experiencing, what, what are we seeing here? Well, we know that for Litchfield Middle School, as an example, given the move to solar, right, we now, in the middle school for electric, we have the solar payment of $95,000. But what we don't have any longer is we don't have the small propane line that we had, as well as the oil line, right? And so if I go back even to FY '22 actual, for, for fossil fuels, right, we actually, we actually spent $126,213 at the middle school. This year, the solar payment is $95,000, right? For retirement, again, it's just a breakout of the dollars specifically on the retirement accounts. For dues and fees for travel and conferences, this is one that I hope to talk about this evening. What you'll see is for, specifically for travel reimbursement and conferences and workshops. And yet, don't forget, we had COVID in here, right? So there's definitely a lower. But there's been a trend that it went from, you know, $40,000 and now it's up to $70,000, right? So I, I find that interesting. For transportation, obviously, we have the large hit from first student this year in the contracts, which we've been talking about at length over the last few meetings. That's represented here in this transportation tab, and you'll note, and the reality is, yeah, it's gone up from 932,000 in FY '20 across all of our lines, including special, special education, to now it's being requested of $1.7 million, which is a significant increase, right? There's no, there's no sugarcoating that. Even from what we budgeted this year, given the new contract, it's going from 1.3 to 1.7, that's the request. Now, that being said, I should say the board did take action last night to, to remove a bus, go from nine to eight buses. That is not reflected in this table. And just carrying it forward, repairs and maintenance, same thing, right? Under the 430 code, minor, minor increase from year to year, but historically, it's less. Supplies, also interesting to take a look at, and you'll see across the district, actually supplies is, is down, which is down from the current year, which is interesting. Furniture and equipment, which is also down. Anyway, it's, again, more of that tops-down approach in taking a look at it, just providing a different lens for the board to consider. So I hope, I hope you find that helpful as, as you start to get familiar, get familiar with the budgets and go through the process.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Any questions from anybody?
No, I think it's a, definitely a different way to look at it, and it's, you know, it's helpful from the way that we went line by line to seeing what it looks like overall. So I appreciate the work you do to create the.
Sure.
Thank you.
Happy to.
All right, so now we're at the place where it's an open floor. Anyone can make comments, general comments, make motions in terms of looking to cut or increase, or, you know, have a conversation. We have our great admin team here for the second night in a row and third and, you know, five business nights, to answer questions or to weigh in on what a particular impact would have on any type of proposed cut. So I will open the floor to the board members to, to go ahead with, with motions or comments.
I lost my internet.
All right, I'll fill the silence. So for me, I come right back to our school board conduct and what our oath and what our job is as school board members. And that first, it says that, you know, remember that first and greatest concern must be the educational welfare of students attending the public school. So with the budget, I am looking through that lens and I definitely see and understand there's a big difference between needs and wants, but I also believe there's a big difference between needs and bare minimum. And I think we've been asking our district to operate on bare minimum for, for too many years. And so I'm not sure where I'm going to land on any proposed motions, but I say that out loud because from the lens of supporting our admin team, supporting our teachers who are, again, this budget comes from them. You guys organically are meeting with your teachers who are working with students and saying to you, this is what I need, and then from there, you guys are taking the lead on that. You know, I'm, I'm really supportive of making sure our classrooms, our teachers, our staff, our admin, across the board, have the resources that they need and not the bare minimum, not what they can survive with, but what they need. And so I just, that's the lens I'm looking at tonight, and I just sort of wanted to say that out loud.
So I, I also agree with that. I think part of our duty within that framework is to also view it from a taxpayer perspective because at the end of the day, we need a budget to get approved to give you the things that we're agreeing on in here. So I think to the extent that we look to cut anything, it would be done with that viewpoint only, right? Because if, if we could get everything that you asked for approved, then the voters would say, absolutely, we love education so much that we want to, we don't care what our taxes are. I don't doubt for one minute that the things that you're putting in front of us are things that.
So basically, if we were Bedford.
Right. I don't doubt for one second that everything that you're putting in front of us are things that would benefit the kids. I don't, I didn't see anything that seemed.
Egregious or.
Egregious or unreasonable or.
As I said last night, these were responsible budgets that were put together.
Absolutely.
But, and, and you're right, right? You have to balance that with what can the taxpayers absorb, right?
Understood.
And that's the balance, that's the struggle every year. And I'm also in my mind thinking, well, jeez, I know it's not directly in the budget, but we're also talking about teacher contracts and we're also, which are likely sizable, right? And that will be put onto the voters for voting in March. We're also talking about a new elementary school, which is a huge ticket item, right? So I'm trying to balance all of those potential increases with the asks or two.
Absolutely. And it's not an easy balance, right?
It's not.
And because those needs are very, very different in town, you know, we've all, as much as I've been reluctant to look on any type of social media, seen that there has been a tax increase with this most recent bill that went out that is impacting people and their ability, you know, to make their bills and when they're on a fixed income. And so I'm certainly sensitive and understanding of that. But I also think some of our cuts in the last few years may have been too deep, and now that's the expectation, is to maintain those deep cuts rather than, at what point can we, as the data showed, start to not be in the bottom 20% in the state of New Hampshire for funding education for our students?
I also think that we need to find a way to equate those cuts in what they actually mean in the context of educating kids. Because I think when you're looking at this purely from what your tax bill is, which the majority of us, I mean, I'll admit that prior to doing all of this, I wasn't as deeply involved with all this stuff. I don't expect that anyone would go through this. But I think that it's, it's hard to equate when we see, oh, well, there's all these open positions, right? The, the, a lot of people's brains go to, well, we must not need them if they're surviving, right? There's a lot of, you survive, you all do a great job surviving.
That's not, that's not true, right?
What's not, what's not true?
That, well, that we need those positions. We need those positions as a town to, to survive, but we've had, not had, we haven't had a challenge to fill those positions.
Correct. But my, my point is that I think that there is oftentimes a perception that if we are surviving without them, then we must not need them, and therefore, those are.
Then we can continue to do so.
And that is incorrect.
Easy cuts, right? But, but again, I, you know, hope that we can somehow convey that so that way, when we're looking at these things, it's not just the assumption that if you've done well without, or if you've made do without it, that you, you just simply don't need it and we can just cut it. Because I think that's how we end up in the 20.
I think, right, I, I think the, in order to move this forward, in order to provide the students with a better education, what we're loud and clear hearing from all the district staff is the need for more teachers in the very specific areas that they've asked for. We need a grade one teacher, we need a mental health clinician, we need a social worker, we need a ELL teacher, we need an IT technician. We need these resources to be able to effectively do our jobs, so we're not doing 10 other jobs at the same time.
Yes.
All right? All of these other items that, that I'm looking at anyway, are pretty ancillary. Yeah, I'm going to talk about Chromebooks, right? Okay, well, you're still going to have all the Chromebooks that you need to meet the district needs, right? That's not, that's not the debate. Yes, we're going to talk about conferences and travel, but again, you're going to have all the resources you need to meet the needs. The real, the real moving of the needle for the district is, in my mind, is the teachers and the ask of teachers. And I think, for me, I think we got to make the case to the voters and let the voters decide what, what they want to fund. Like, I think these positions need to go to warrant. There were, there were several positions in there, there were two positions in there that are a clean match, like the, where is it? The special education teacher that was in there and the math teacher that was in there that you want to transfer into other, other grades, I believe. Is that correct?
Yep.
Well, half correct. So the special ed teacher was transferred to the elementary school is.
The math teacher was a cut.
But the math is cut, eliminated.
Gotcha. Okay. But so those, those are two positions though, that I don't think we need to go back to the voters and ask for. I think those are positions that were already in the budget that we can, we can action, we can fill, right? It's just a re, a repurposing of those positions.
My issue with that, Andrew, and I know I've said this over the years, and I still, I still feel this way, is that we are obligated, and I think we're going back, I think it's, you know, back to that advisory 2003 petition warrant article where a majority in 2000 Where a majority in two thousand and three of the Luttrell voters voted in favor of having the school district put all new positions on a warrant because we had just opened a new high school. And I believe the, the feeling at the time was that we didn't wanna grow too big all at once in the, the budget before we actually knew what we needed. I feel like as an advisory warrant article, it is non-binding. The school board still has the constitutional right and the constitutional responsibility to put positions that are needed in our operating budget. I think there are times where, where positions are absolutely needed by the district, and I know exactly how you're gonna respond to this, but give me a minute. I think it's, 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 here's the thing about putting it on a warrant article. If the voters decide, I can't afford that, I can't see that rise in my tax, my taxes this year. Then we cannot hire that position until the next year.
And you're going into, against your own policy in some cases.
Right, exactly. However, if we put it into the operating budget, we can find money for that position in other areas. If it's something that we critically, critically need, like a school counselor or a fifth grade one teacher, we can find money in other areas of the budget in order to fund that position. And we can, we can provide that for our students when it's a critical need. And I feel like these are all critical needs at this point. I feel like these are not bare, these are not, you know, want, want to have. I think we need to have these positions in the school district. I know that there's been a longstanding agreement with the budget committee and with some of the voters that everything should be on a warrant, but the truth is we're the experts in education. We have asked our teachers, we've asked our administrators, we've asked our directors, what they need to provide an adequate education for our students. And they told us, and I feel very strongly that we have the right to put it in our budget so that we can, so that we can provide those resources for them.
Can I?
Yeah.
Just to echo that, like we, we came in and said, there are positions that we recognize are bringing positions. But to put the one or the ten percent of the social worker on a, on a warrant is something that we've had for the last three or four years due to COVID money. That money is gone at the end of this year. So it's not that we, it's no longer needed. It's that that funding resource that we were using to support that last bit of that funding is gone. The kindergarten teacher, the grade one teacher, those are things that we know if they get voted down on warrant, we probably are still gonna need based on the policies that we have for student numbers. So it's putting us in a situation that is is going to be very difficult to get out of if the town says no. And the reality is, we were cognizant of it, I mean, across the board. That was the reason that we came in and said, look, these are positions we already have. We know we already have them, the district, the voters have already said these positions are okay in this district. The ones that they've had no input on, absolutely one hundred percent we support going to warrant.
And I think that's the big difference is the definition of a new position. That seems to be where there's some diverging views on that, is a new position, the fifth first grade teacher, we have four and we're adding a fifth, is that a new position? I don't believe so because that is, we have four first grade teachers and that is driven by enrollment. That's not a decision that's being made. Enrollment in the criteria that's set forth as part of our policy and there is additional criteria beyond enrollment, but that's a big driver for it. And I don't see that as a new teacher. You know, this ELL teacher was literally full-time last year. This is the first year we agreed at the recommendation of the district to cut it down to seventy percent. Now they're saying, we cut too deep, we need that full-time back. I don't think that should be up to the taxpayer to decide whether we need that thirty percent or not. That has to be a decision made by our admin team who has a better understanding of what our ELL needs are as compared to taxpayers who, I'm not saying that they don't understand if we tell them, but they don't have that day-to-day clearer picture.
Well, and I would hope that the taxpayer would be able to appreciate that if you are requiring that to go back to the taxpayer, you're disincentivizing this, the administration from trying to make cuts.
Yeah.
Not knowing whether they're going to work, but taking the risk on that in, in order to try to, to
Let's keep a fifth first grade teacher even if we don't have the numbers for it because we might need it in the future. I mean, I think it's been pretty clear that first and kindergarten have fluctuated between five and four throughout the years.
We've reacted accordingly.
We have a capital reserve account for any teacher as well, just so you're aware.
That was used last year for kindergarten, wasn't it?
We have a hundred thousand dollars in that account.
We didn't have to.
We didn't have to because of underspending.
Oh, because of we had underspending.
But I think if you look at the ELL position, that's something that we need, like we
Are legally required to have.
Legally required to provide ELL services to all of those students. And if it goes to warrant and we don't get the approval, we are stuck with a seventy percent ELL teacher and we are unable to, without some serious creative thinking and/or using funding elsewhere to supplement it to provide the services that we are legally getting.
And actually listening, it, it was a hundred percent last year, went to seventy percent. I agree, like that's one that probably makes sense to have be in the budget, right? Because that was a full-time, that is, we're just, it's not an expansion of services. It was the service provided and we're just restoring it back to that level of service.
Do you agree with that for the social worker then, which is full-time currently, but ten percent of that salary was paid for
It comes out of the Essor grant.
Essor grant money that's running out, so in order to maintain the current services, which is a full-time person.
District has already funded and paid ninety percent of that salary. No, so tell me how that works.
It has been funded, it started as a part-time position that was funded through the Essor grant. As we came out of COVID and we saw an increase in need, we added it to the IDEA grant.
Okay.
Which is not one that dries up. So currently it is funded from three pools. It's funded, funded from IDEA, it's funded from our general fund and it is funded from Essor.
Essor is running out.
Essor is running out. It will be, it, it dries up at the end of September twenty-four. So if we do not find, if we don't approve those
That's a position that was never in the budget because we already had, we already had offsetting funds to
It was partially in the budget, it was a part, it was
This year we're paying sixty-nine percent of the position out of the general fund.
But what, what was it before this year?
Right here, um
That's alright.
It was
It was less.
It was less because we paid more out of the grant funds.
That's what I meant, so I, I would view that as a new position to the taxpayer, right? Because it has been sourced through other funding, other funding mechanisms.
But there's only ten percent that is
So from a, from a policy perspective, cause it seems like an area that would be ripe for some policy discussion. Do we want to, again disincentivize the concept of if you can go out and find grant money to establish something and, and trial it in your school? Do we want to then require that it has to go to warrant to, to keep it in place? I don't know if that's, right, it's, it, it, there's, there's part of the argument that's, is this a way of backdooring something? But I don't think that, I wouldn't, I personally wouldn't look at it like that because I personally look at it as, again, I applaud the resourcefulness and, you know, but I don't wanna claw something back that they've worked hard to get.
Historically, grant-funded positions have, we've been able to fund them as long as we can through the grants. And then if it's still a necessary position, we've been able to transfer it into the operating budget without putting it on warrant. I'm sorry, I have like no voice left.
I mean, I think it's the, I don't wanna say it's the debate that's had every year either here and budget committee, but it kind of is. And it's going to happen again when they get it. I think, you know, for me, if, I don't view a new position as being one that the taxpayer, that is an addition of a current position or addition of a position we've had before. So for example, let's talk about one we haven't talked about yet, which is the IT technician. We have an IT technician that has been approved by the taxpayers. There, those who work within the budget are saying there's a need for a second one and that compared to other districts, we are grossly understaffed in that area. Should that be a individual taxpayer decision? Or should that be a decision of the school board to allocate its resources?
Well, so I think where I, I don't know, I, I don't know if Andrew gave his opinion on this, but I think this is where, where I can sort of come back to his side of things would be when we talk about first grade, we talk about that being driven by enrollment. Now, obviously the need for an IT technician, if we have more students, that, that's gonna correlate, but it's, it's not gonna be the same type of correlation. So I could see the argument being made for that type of position because you are creating another seat.
I understand that, but I, I don't think it comes down to more students, it's more electronics. It's so with the decision by the school board and the district and supported by the town to have our one-to-one handing out Chromebooks that have now reached down into GMS at this point, though they don't go home, but they have access to them, one-to-one.
They can go home if they need to for snow, weather days.
But that to me is more of the enrollment decision at that point because it's not necessarily based on the student need as driving it so much as it is. The district has made the intentional and conscious decision as supported by the taxpayer
to have a one-to-one program and to have these devices out there. They have to be able to service them and our IT director, you know, well, I'm sure he's happy to do it, has a gazillion other things that he should be doing.
And that we need him to focus on.
Correct.
I think we also look at the IT tech position too. If last year we weren't asked to come and lean, then I'm sure it would've been part of last year's ask as well. But if, when it's, when the ask is to come and lean either from the school board or from the town or that just that feeling of we need to come and lean, then these things haven't been brought up before. Cause you know, we've had devices now for, for a little while and we've been understaffed with those devices now for a while.
I mean, before me there was a tech director and there were two techs. I don't know if Roger was part-time when he first started or no?
He was.
He was, so at least one and a half.
No, he started as an intern and then came right into full-time. It was still Department Four because when, right.
So that was an add and I think what happened in the shuffle is we lost an IT person, an IT tech.
Correct.
There was an extra body at some point doing Chromebooks and like groundwork.
Right. Again, it sounds like that was a, that was a position that we had.
Position because at one point we had Jason, Brendan, Roger and Andrea as the four. The warrant article added Karen as a digital learning specialist. And when Jason and Brendan left, we brought Chris in.
Yeah.
Brought, uh, when Roger left, we brought Jameson in, but that still left us with the four and it kind of got rid of the extra tech person that we had already had.
And this has come up too, I mean, we, we, we had a review of the technology user, user policy and the manual and all of that work that Chris needs to spend time doing and not taking part in reassembling or concerning Chromebooks, so.
So I guess my question for the board, we've kind of generally talked about positions. Are there any motions regarding positions tonight? Do you want, because those are larger ticket, as you said, they're the, the bigger items to wait until the fifteenth for that? Vote on those items and deal with some of the other stuff?
It's, I mean, it's the will of the board. I mean, I, I do think hearing Mr. Clancy's thoughts, just to have the whole board picture would be helpful. But I'm ready to go if the board wants to do it tonight, so.
Alright, well, if you wanna start with your motions, I think, I think we're ready. We've had the general conversation and I think, um, and again, I appreciate you sharing these with us in advance because that gave me time to look them over and think them over and research them a little bit more and look in the budget, so I appreciate that.
So for the teacher grade one, I will motion to reduce the budget by ninety-five thousand sixty-seven dollars.
Is there a second? Hearing none, next?
Mental health clinician, school counselor, I will look to reduce the budget by one hundred and four thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
I did not get to see your email, was that, I just wanted to open it, this one?
Yeah, that one.
I just wanna make sure I have it in front of me.
Is there a second on the mental health clinician motion?
Okay, no problem. I will make a motion to remove the IT technician position by ninety-one thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars.
Is there a second?
So
Why are you seconding if you wanna even have discussion on it?
I'll second it for the purpose of discussion.
There you go.
What I, what I wanna try to figure out is, I think at one point I mentioned something about trying to come up with a long-term plan of like how to achieve things. And I don't know that we can achieve everything in one year. So I, I don't debate that there's a need for this at all. I, I can very well see that there's a need for this. And I, I don't know that I'm ready to vote in favor of this, but this is one position that, you know, if we have to make cuts, and I hate, I hate to ask anyone to have to continue doing more over the course of a year. But you know, in, in the effort of getting the, the budget passed, this is, this is one where I'm, I'm wondering if we can one of the questions that drove this for me was how much, you know, and I, I understand there's, there are people that are waiting for things to get back to them, but how much of a, a delay in learning are we experiencing if something goes down like that? And you know, I didn't expect it to have like a full-blown thirty hours or something like that, but, you know, so, so I don't know that I'm ready to, to vote in, in favor of reducing this right now, but I, you know, for the purpose of discussion, I, I do wanna at least acknowledge that as being something that I could, you know, put it across.
If you needed to.
Yeah.
Can I just note something? So you, you asked that question the other night and I really gave it some hard thought. So over the summer with E S Y, it impacted a full day of E S Y. So E S Y granted, it's not a full school day, they're usually three to four hours long. But the internet went down or something went down and literally I was getting panicked texts, I was showing up. I couldn't get high school kids into their Chromebooks or do anything for hours. So we lost an entire day. So although it may not seem like much because it's E S Y, but when something goes down, I think, wasn't it the day where it was like a whole day with the server?
That's not a few of those.
Yeah, I think
And it was sitting in
It goes down at C H S, it goes down, it was dark for everybody, all three of them get hit at the same time.
So it was, it, it impacted an entire day of learning for E S Y and our summer scholars, um, which
And not, not just that, it impacted
A workday.
Our workday, like for many of us, I mean, yeah, we, there's a lot of things we can do to pivot to paper, pivot to non-digital, but I don't, like, I don't do anything on paper. So to not have the internet and have to pivot, I mean, it's like cleaning, cleaning my office.
I have another piece that I just, I would like to chime in on. When the internet goes down, not only does it impact our learning environment, but it limits our ability to communicate with families. I think back to that for the whole December day, two years ago, when we had no internet. I wanted to communicate with families and I'm standing outside with my cellphone, I'm like this in the parking lot of L M S trying to get something in or out and couldn't. And the only way that I have internet is there in certain bathrooms at L M S or in certain corners of the world, the kids all know where the spots are, but there's very limited access. So when we don't have that, not only do cellphones go down, but our telephones go down. So if parents wanna call in, if we need to call out in an emergency situation, we have our emergency radios, but it really cuts us off from the outside world. It's a huge impact and it's a safety impact that I think is important to discuss. That wasn't mentioned in this conversation.
My parking spot has great side of service and I shouldn't have to know that.
It also affects lunch because our register systems are all cloud-based, so there's no internet. It's insanely, I'm gonna say annoying because you gotta write everyone's name or number down with So there's no internet, it's insanely, I'm going to say annoying because you got to write everyone's name or number down with what they got. Just adding it on there.
All right, so we.
And again, you're, you're proposing that we cut it to move, to move it to one?
Hundred percent.
I think the other thing to keep in mind is.
I couldn't get into that because we didn't have a second, so.
We didn't.
My, my discussion is to move this to one.
Where we, we have four, we do have four people in our IT department. Two of whom, when the systems go down, they're not help, I, I don't want to. Sorry Andrea, sorry Karen, that is not what it, but that's not their role. So to, they're, I mean, Andrea's not going to climb up into the ceiling to.
Not a chance.
I mean, she would if you asked her to, I mean, you know that, but.
But we would never do that.
I think that's the other thing to keep in mind is that we really as a district have two, two people to keep all of our tech running.
It's not just devices from the students and staff, like we've added more systems over the years. Like I've taken on the P A system at the high school now because all digital-based and I have the security cameras. Like those things keep getting added onto the plate as well.
And guest wireless, we've asked you to put guest wireless at our schools.
Guest wireless would be O D.
And so that, which we want and we need and parents have begged for, um, because you can't find any internet whatsoever when you're sitting at your kid's event, especially at L M S, I'm going to say.
And there's strict laws on how that has to be now, so C H S and L M S does have it now, L M S soon, um, but that's time away.
Yeah.
So I just want to reiterate, I appreciate what you do. I, I certainly don't want you to have to kill yourself to achieve what you should be able to achieve. And I also just want to reiterate that the feedback that we get in response to that is helpful. You know, if Andrew just motions all these things and we don't discuss any of them, I, we, we need.
Absolutely, correct.
This feedback so that that way we can come up with a budget that we can defend.
Yep. So we have a motion, second, all those in favor of reducing the budget by ninety-one thousand one hundred and eighty-seven dollars?
Just, I, one more discussion point on this?
Nope, I'm backing up, yeah, go ahead.
I mean, so we did have this on warrant, we've already set the precedent, and it failed.
No, that was the digital learning specialist.
Digital learning specialist.
The second digital learning, that's not this one, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else before I call the vote?
Nope, that's.
Okay, um, all those in favor, and I'm not even going to say what I all just said in a minute. In favor of cutting ninety-one thousand one eighty-seven for IT, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain, this fails one, three, zero. Okay, I think that's the salaried ones that we were going to talk about. Are there any other areas for discussion or motions that to be entertained tonight?
I'd like to talk about, uh, C H S, if we can switch gears.
Yeah.
Uh, C H S, enough, I'll put page eleven. And specifically under the vocational education five sixty-one line. So this was level funded at F Y twenty-three actual for ninety-eight thousand, I appreciate that. Uh, I do think it's a critically important program based upon the discussions that we had, no disputes there. I'm just thinking, what is actually the right future number? And if this is an opportunity where we can phase it a bit as opposed to going into one year at twenty-four, at fifty-six thousand to ninety-eight thousand, one big jump. Is there an opportunity to phase this and grow this line a bit over time as, as opposed to the big guy?
There's no way to know which kids are going to attend C T E until they start the programs. If we don't fund it, I don't know where we're going to fund the money. You can tell kids they can't go to C T E, I prefer not to do that. Um, so there's, there's, this is one of those lines, there's, there's no good way ten months in advance to budget for it. And, and that's, that's just one of those educational things that, that we have to do. I think that we keep it relatively tight everywhere else. That, you know, if I have to ask for leeway somewhere, you know, this is one of those spots where I would do that because there's no way to predict how many kids are going to go. We can ask and garner interest, but until they apply and are accepted and enroll and start in September, end of August, there, there's no way of knowing.
So can you remind me how we use, how we predicted this or how we estimated this number then?
It's right here, it was the number for F Y twenty-two-three, so that's what we spent last year.
F Y twenty-three was ninety-seven, three ninety-seven, but if you look at yours prior than the fifties.
So that's, oh, that was our, okay, so that's.
I'm just going to weigh in on this just a tiny bit and then obviously let you guys run with it. But I, this is from a parent perspective, I, before this year, I probably wouldn't have been able to tell you too much about the C T E program. There are so many students, it has been such an increase in students who are attending the program. Anyone who has any interest in pursuing any type of medical field is doing the program for their nursing where they can do, or they have other options too, I don't know all the specifics to get, they could, they're going to be an L N A. Literally, they will have their license to be an L N A for next semester and be able to work evenings at different nursing homes or facilities. There, I literally have friends with kids this age group and the majority have their kids attending at least one class for C T E, if not more. You know, the chef, there, there's so many different options. Anyone who has an in, interest in animals is doing the veterinary program, anyone, it's just so broad. And so I have seen such an influx and I don't know if it's valid, I don't, because Ms. Nelson is fantastic. I don't know if she promotes the program, I don't know why it took such a jump over the year. But there truly is a very large number of students who are doing it in their junior year. And I anticipate there is the option for them to do it in their senior year. For a lot of them, they have a secondary option to continue their study there.
Right.
That those students who are doing the program this year are going to want to do it next year. And then a high amount of sophomores that, there are few sophomores doing it, I don't think there's that many right now.
There's not a lot of programs that offer it.
Yeah.
But I, but I will say, because I know a counter argument could be, well, Jake enrollment's going down, so that's, can we, it's, they're opening more and more programs to sophomores and making them three-year programs, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Correct.
I, I don't anticipate seeing numbers go, go down that much at all. I think where we saw a large jump was coming out of COVID, being able to tour the facilities again.
Yeah.
If you've been to Alvern's new facilities, it is a beautiful facility.
It's beautiful, yeah.
Not to mention, you know, Pinkerton's facilities. I mean, I mean, when kids are able to go there and see what is offered to them, they jump at the opportunity. It's, it's unlike, and I also think that we have a changing demographic of the type of student that came to high school.
Yeah, we do.
Not every kid is going to a two or four-year college. And being able to get that industry credential and that experience before they graduate high school is just, i- it's, to me, that's a discount, like we're getting, we're getting seventy-five percent off of it at that price.
Isn't that true? It's less to educate students who go to C T E because we leverage the Pell Grants and.
Yeah, yeah, there's more federal money that goes to them, therefore we pay less. So I was on the phone with several other B As today and we talked, I asked them about how do they kind of project their C T E budget? And a lot of the talk shifted to the, C T Es are, are great and great for the students. There wasn't a clear, and that, but I'm like, okay, but, but I, there wasn't necessarily a clear answer. I heard like we look at trends. So you know, sometimes we look at trends, you look at a three-year average, five-year average. But that's a tough trend to look at when you're coming out of COVID, as people said. And, and it wasn't presented to the younger students as, as, as an option as much as it is now. So I mean, the closest trend we had, because there was such a jump, was last year. So that's the trend that we decided to choose for this time, is it correct? It's not going to be close to a hundred percent correct, but that's, that's what the numbers we had to go off of.
I also think we have to keep in mind that we got rid of our, our wood tech program last year. So that we will see an uptick in kids that wanted to take wood trades, take carpentry, that could do it in-house and are now having to go out to do that. And I think not sit, but we know that like fax has been an area that we're, we're lucky to have Sue. But if Sue were to retire or leave us, it's not an area that this, there are sort of, an abundance, there aren't even.
We couldn't find one for L M S.
We couldn't find one for L M S.
Right.
So I think we'll see more of our kids that want to pursue culinary also going out into, because we don't have the opportunities to be able to do it in-house anymore.
So if I, right, all valid, critical program as I started with, not disputed, but it's what's the right number? And why do we need to go and budget this essentially what? Forty thousand, almost forty thousand, forty thousand higher, right, forty, forty-one thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars higher this year if we don't actually know the right number? I'm going to make a motion to reduce this line by eight thousand dollars, uh, and still give you thirty-two thousand dollars in extra money over the what you have this year to send these kids to the program.
You should have started with an eight grand number, I would have far more.
Would have ended a lot of conversation.
What's the right number, I don't know.
We're okay with that, I could work with eight grand, I'm a reasonable guy.
Blood back up there to him.
So the question I, I would have for that is for fiscal year twenty-three.
I'm going to hold you for a second, do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
Not me though.
So we went over budget in fiscal year twenty-three. We, we found the money just because, you know, as, as I looked at the school board goals, you know, post-secondary pathways, it matched up with that. How do we say no to students? Um, so I don't know the direction that the board wants. So I made that decision on my own, maybe it wasn't the right way to go. Um, but I feel like we needed to support the kids who had this interest with knowing what the school board goals were. If we move it to, to whatever number, is that the number that we're going to cap it at? Is that what we want to do, like if we move it to ninety?
No.
No, okay, so.
I'm not capping it at anything, I want to reassess year to year what the right number is. What I'm hearing, over time, I think we're going to get better at what this number is.
Yep.
Based upon enrollment. The problem this year is we don't know really what it's going to look like.
Well, we can only go based off of last year's enrollment, which is why the number is proposed to be what was actually spent last year, right? And I guess.
Then why was it in the budget for fifty-six thousand this year?
It, we had spent that by the end of last year.
Yeah, by the end of last year, so we didn't know.
So we didn't know that last November, that there was going to be that kind of interest.
So chances are we'll be over budget in that line.
So you see that the fifty-six was level funded with fiscal year twenty-two.
Right.
So that's continued that trend with level funding it for our most recent actual.
Hey Jake, can I ask, is there a breakdown of how many juniors versus how many seniors are in? I know that my.
I can, I can get it for you, yeah.
I'd just be curious because if there's juniors who are doing it now, I think they're likely to do it for their senior year.
They're often two-year programs.
Programs for business and whatnot. And so that may or may not give us an idea of a projected number at least for, and obviously there's new people that could want to do it. And then we have no idea what sophomores coming into junior year are going to want to do, but.
They must have enrollment for this year, so we know what it's, should, do we have an idea, I mean, we should have an idea of what it will actually cost us this year, right? Because students are already enrolled in the program or is it like a semester thing?
Well, the, what was requested this year is based off of the enrollment for this.
Of the actual enrollment for this year, so.
Is it the same as last year or is it higher or is it lower?
Yeah, I'll get the numbers.
I guess so, yeah.
So there's a, there's one thing with that too. So some of the out-of-district students actually access those programs. I was made aware of a student being accepted into one of those programs the first day. I didn't know they had applied. So there's a little bit of like crossover where I was like, say what, you what? So then it was, I mean, got it figured out, but the point is that even our out-of-district students, when the schools are close enough, are accessing those C T E programs. And as much as I try to have that communication open, it's not always there.
Yeah, Jen?
So two things that I want to just share as part of the middle school. We have been reached out to by a couple of different things you've seen on our, I'm sure on our Facebook page in the past and in communications that we've had the C T E van from, um, state come with Ms. Corville, who's wonderful and fantastic. I can't say enough great things about her. But, um, brought the C T E van, which shows kids in seventh and eighth grade what C T is. They had a chance to have hands-on experiences with different programs. In C T E, the van comes around with health services, with robotics, with all of those different components. So we had that twice last year and tend to have that come back again this year. And we've also been reached out to by Alvern for our eighth graders to be able to come over and tour and see what the C T E programs are over there now to kind of give that information. So I would say that happened last year, it's going to happen again this year. I would say I'd see that as an increase as well.
So how are we, are we doing, we may have talked about this the other day, but we've talked about a lot of things, so. How are we gauging in, interest and at what points are we gauging interest? You know, are we doing it at the end of middle school, are we doing it freshman year? Are we, or are we, you know, finding out?
Yes, I mean, yes to all of that. We, we gauge interest at the middle school level, we talk about it as they become high school kids, we bring them tours their sophomore years. Every year there, as they look at the program of studies and we get the, um, flyers from the different C T Es, we talk to the kids about the programs that are available to them, so we gauge.
So that's promote, but that's promoting it?
But, and, and then who's interested? So after the promotion, we gauge interest every year at, at every level. It's just whether or not some programs you have to apply to.
Sure.
And when do they finally tell us that students are accepted, you know? Depends on the program and how many kids are applying to.
But if we, if we, if we know that there's interest, right, whether or not they get accepted, right? We could, we can start to look at numbers based off of interest because worst case scenario is they don't get accepted, they, it's lower at that point. But, um, do we have, and we may, I think you may have asked this the other day, but do we have anything that correlates to the information that you're gathering from them in terms of level of interest and how many are actually going on to pursue this?
I don't know if they've necessarily in the past kept numbers on it, we certainly can moving forward.
Yeah, because I mean, I think that could be the, that could be a basis for the formula is to say, okay, we had X amount uh, expressed interest this year and then this many went in and we can use that as a percentage year over year. And I think that could be how we get closer and closer to dialing in that number.
Yeah, but I think it takes time to get there.
Andrew, yeah.
So we're definitely not at a perfect place for forecasting that. I'm, I'm with Jake, I, I think if we take eight thousand off, I don't, that's reasonable. Just because we, we can't defend the ninety-eight thousand more than the fact that that's what we spent the last time we had it. So if, if eight thousand is, is the will of the board, I don't, I don't think you're going to have an, an argument from us. You know, as long as we can go over that as well, that was the important thing for me, you know. Uh, we might go under, you, you know, but if, if another student wants to sign up, we want to make sure that they have access.
So can we, how does the board feel about tabling this one until the fifteenth to allow Mr. Hess to get us some of the numbers of current enrollment compared to last year's enrollment? So we can understand how many students therefore made up that ninety-eight thousand and then how many are, are attending this year?
Well, we know the price per course that they're taking?
I assume with that.
Roughly the same, yeah.
Figure that out?
Yeah.
I just would be interested because again, I, I agree in terms of eight thousand isn't a devastating cut to this line item. But again, given my experience with it and how popular it is, I actually think ninety-eight thousand is going to be under budgeted. I, I think that is under budgeting, it's going to be more than that. I don't know that for sure and we obviously are guessing, but I would like to see those numbers. Is that something the board would be comfortable with tabling until, and then we'll have Mr. Blansky here for a.
He's still up time, so.
Okay, all right.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Perfect, thank you.
You want to withdraw your second?
I'll withdraw my second.
All right, anything else for C H S, Andrew?
Yep, uh, page eighteen. And this is one, Ms. Swamin, you were going to confirm for us on the S A T school testing?
Yes, so what I've confirmed is that it's a mess. Sorry, um.
Do I need to budget for it or not?
So I can't, that's one thing that I'm going to ask that you table till the next meeting.
Okay.
We've had, we paid for it last year. The state has now come forward and said, what did, we don't know what you paid for. I've been in talks with, uh, Ms. Nelson all evening.
You paid us, but we took your money, but.
So originally, what I can say is that originally when the state shifted to the S A T, it was, the state covered the S A T. And if we wanted to do the essay, it was an additional cost. That has been, I have never been made aware that that changed. The state said, nope, it, it didn't. And then came back to her this afternoon and said, oh yeah, you shouldn't be paying for the essay. So we're trying to just get the details on.
Uncle Wayne, all good.
Okay.
On where that came from, it was a little bit of.
That one's table.
Page twenty-four.
A lot of time on the phone with her.
Uh, the community graduate signs for two thousand dollars.
Yep.
Great, love seeing the signs, uh, at the end of the year, I think they're really cool. I just don't know that they should be in the budget. And I think we set the precedent about what about the fourth graders who are graduating? How come they don't get community signs in the budget? What about the eighth graders that are graduating? How come they don't get signs that are in the budget? There have been, last year, starting last year, I started to see elementary school signs popping up in people's yards and around town. And I, like, I just think it sets a bad precedent that, um, we're including this in the budget, although admittedly as a parent, I love. And I, like, I just think it sets a bad precedent that, um, we're including this in the budget, although admittedly, as a parent, I love to see that.
So I guess I see high school as a different achievement as fourth grade and eighth grade, for me. Um, I certainly, there's a lot of things that are in the budget for our seniors based off of graduation that are in the CHS budget that aren't in the budget for LMS eighth grade graduation, that aren't in the budget for.
Promotion.
Promotion, yeah, it's promotion ceremony, so I'm comfortable with these. I think they're, they're really important to establish rapport. You know, I think boosters has been the one who has.
It's been boosters, the PTO, and friends with the poor cards.
Okay.
And then I've used my principal's account line to help fund it as well, so.
Is two thousand the total for?
Yes, they, yeah, they estimated, I think it was like fifteen dollars per sign, I times it by how many seniors there were. And again, this was one of those things where they came to me and asked, I said, I'll give it a shot. You know, talking to Doug today, um, you know, is this something that, you know, if, if we're thinking two thousand's too much, do we say, we'll go halvesies? You know, this is something where, um, you know, the, the high school wants to provide this as, as part of our graduation celebration. So not a, possibly a bad precedent to start, but a, a new tradition at Campbell High School where this is part of our graduation ceremony that we provide for our kids.
So when Jake first brought this up with Dr. J and I, you know, as, as we talked it through too, um, we talked about, you, you know, even though it's high school, it's, it's K through twelve accomplishment type of thing. And it really is at the end of twelfth grade, which I, I see a difference at the end of eighth grade than fourth grade too, you know? And it's, and it's PR for, for the town and education. Every adult that had an impact and the student themselves that, that persevered through it. Um, and it's PR for, for, for town, education, which is a huge part of the town and positive PR. Um, and we saw the two thousand as a lower price for positive PR, even though there is a cost with it. I, I still look at your splitting it with somebody else.
Yeah.
Yep.
Is there a motion?
Did you have a comment?
I, I mean, I, I don't disagree with the idea of, of splitting it. I think, I, I also don't feel like it, it slights GMS or LMS by, by having that. I, you know, I think it's a nice thing that we do. I also think that it's something that, you know, private groups and, uh, Mr. Hess have, have worked together to fund. And, you know, there are certain things, as we are looking at ever-growing costs of things, there are certain things that private groups may need to continue to fund for a little while to, to make these budgets work. So I think that I, you know.
Yeah, I'd be comfort, I'd be comfortable with reducing it by a thousand to have it be halvesies if we were gonna do that. But the other piece I would say, um, in terms of the community graduate signs, I think it's really important to be able to, the, the placement of them in the town, you know, the way, they're not just in the yard. I think they've done it a couple of years now, and to me, this is almost like lacrosse. Where you self-fund for a period of years, see if it works, see if it's a good thing, and then you make your request for the budget. And so I'm sort of looking at it as a, it's been self-funded for how many years now, three or four? It kinda has become a tradition. I think the seniors this year would be really devastated if they weren't gonna do it. Yeah, so it's three graduation classes? But I also see stepping into it. I think your step argument is, you know, we start with halves and then. So I'd be open to entertaining a motion on that. Although it's, a thousand dollars is obviously small.
Paul, let's have the estimate motion.
I mean, I'll make a motion to reduce that line item to a thousand.
I'll second. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of reducing that line item on page twenty four to by a thousand dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Did you say to five thousand dollars or by one thousand dollars?
Reducing it by one thousand.
I heard, I heard five thousand.
Sorry guys! I will not see it.
I'm an a then.
Okay.
You're not reducing it to five thousand.
Correct. So that is an a, so that passes four, zero, zero. See, my optimism yesterday was right on. Anything else for CHS?
Nothing else for CHS on my side.
Okay.
GMS?
Yeah.
I skipped over the one line item. Uh, for GMS on page one, uh, we have the furniture under six ten supplies. I'm sorry, it's under seven thirty seven furniture replacement.
Yep.
Excuse me. We have, we funded this for twenty-two desks per year for the last few years. Uh, and this year, we understood that the request is for forty-four. I'd like to motion to reduce this line by six thousand three hundred and eighty dollars, keeping with the twenty-two replacement schedule.
I'll second for discussion.
No additional discussion.
No additional discussion.
This is a rare thing. You can actually reduce it sixty-six eighty.
With the, um.
The shipping goes from nine hundred to six hundred.
Sixty-six eighty, I'll amend my motion to reduce it by, to, by six thousand six hundred and eighty dollars.
Let the record show, I just gave.
I'll second.
So it's been seconded.
This day in history.
I guess my question for you, Mr. Mitchell, is how do you feel about the cut? And do you think that will have an impact on students?
That impact, uh, uh, go back to my original presentation, it was just, we're one class away from doing the complete set, so I just thought we would throw it to, and just to kinda speed it up, but I will just continue to do it.
Okay.
One, you know, one year, one class at a time.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of reducing, uh, the budget by six thousand six hundred and eighty dollars, uh, for the furniture line item, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? I'm staying four, zero, zero. Business is next, right?
Yeah, I think that's probably one that we need.
Five of us?
Yeah.
Same with special services, I assume?
Yeah, but technology I think we can talk about when we move into technology. So this is technology, page one. As a precursor, earlier this evening, I mentioned Chromebooks. So, uh, in this budget on page one for line seven thirty-four, there are eighty-nine Chromebooks at three hundred dollars apiece for the incoming fifth grade class. The incoming fifth grade class is eighty-three. My proposal, I'll motion to reduce this line by one thousand two hundred dollars, which is setting it to eighty-five, from eighty-nine to eighty-five.
Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
No additional discussion.
Yeah, so I.
Before you motion these, is there a reason why we aren't, because we don't have to, we can discuss these prior to motioning.
Yeah.
So instead of going through the rigmarole of motioning everything and discussing, should we just try to discuss them ahead of time?
It's just, yeah, it's the will of the board. I think, right now, we have a motion and a second for discussion, so let's stick to this topic for now, um.
We're talking two, by two.
I'm talking about reducing it from eighty-nine to eighty-three.
No, eighty-five.
Eighty-five to eighty-three, so by two.
You're reducing it by four.
Yeah, yeah.
And tho- that, those were really just to have.
I, I put in five extra spares, and I, last year I used, from the insurance fund, I used almost eleven thousand dollars to buy new ones.
And you budgeted four extra ones last year as well, correct?
Last year I budgeted for an extra five as well, five or six for each, um, high school and middle school. And I still, and then I still had to use eleven thousand dollars from the insurance fund to purchase new ones for replacements.
So do you anticipate a need of having more than just the eighty?
That won't be enough, I'll have to use the insurance fund again next year, almost guaranteed. Just, just from unreparable things that happen.
And, you know, how quickly, I, I would, I would imagine that you're very quickly going into these.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we, we get into those spares before the end of September, just from over the summer.
And how long is it taking to get replacements in?
So replacement parts, uh, so to get the big order, I put that in like July third, or whatever I can as soon as possible. Uh, those come in like mid-August usually.
But if you have to replace, you know, if, if, if we cut those, you then have to use the insurance fund to.
To purchase more.
Purchase more and order them.
Yeah, you take another month or so before they, they come in, depending on the size of the order and model and stuff like that. They're definitely a lot better on coming in now than they were a couple of years ago, but they still take some time.
I mean, I, I, I understand that we're trying to find anywhere that we can save some money. I don't think that this is exorbitant in terms, I mean, I know you don't think anything's exorbitant, that's asked for either, but I think that you know that you're gonna need more than these anyways. I think you're respectfully asking for less than you actually need.
Yeah, I tried to use as many parts from old ones that we can and just limp along anywhere, but last year we did, we're quite different.
And.
But we also have insurance money to cover the cost.
No, students pay insurance.
Right, but that, that is a fee that we pay, right, for this specific purpose.
And so with insurance money, are the majority of the replacements being covered by insurance money? Or are you running into scenarios where they're not covered by insurance money?
There was a few last year that got invoiced for the full cost of the Chromebook.
If they don't take up the insurance.
If they don't have the insurance.
Right, so it's an elective that parents have at the beginning of the school year.
So they pay for the insurance, and then the first repair is free, the second is out of fifty percent of the cost, and then the third, moving forward, is a hundred percent cost.
What is the cost of one Chromebook?
Three hundred.
About three hundred, it includes the licenses as well.
I just think there's still gonna be a need for using the insurance above and beyond this, as there was last year, so I, I'm not in favor of cutting these.
But your point is that we're covering every student, and so the only reason we would need extras would be that a student damaged it, and it's either gonna be covered by insurance, or they're gonna have to replace it. There's no, there's no, oh, new students.
Yeah, but new student comes in, we get a few of those at the beginning of the year, or in the middle of the year, also a new student, then we have to, I have to give them a Chromebook.
Yeah, you need a buffer.
Yeah, a little bit of a buffer.
So what happens if we, you know, so we have these extras on hand?
Yep.
And they're given to someone that another Chromebook is sent out on. You, you would still have that replaced on insurance and keep a stock?
Yes.
So that would go back into the stock of.
Yeah, so I have, I have like, like a loaner stock that I use for different, like, parts and stuff like that, or, um.
You mentioned outgoing seniors, you'll get those Chromebooks back.
I'll get those as well, so those are, yeah, use them for parts. We use as much as we can in-house, but there's a point where, you know, it just isn't working anymore and it's not worth a repair. You know, it's a two hundred dollar piece of equipment to repair it, it's not gonna be worth it, so we swap it out for a new one. Or even a used one sometimes if we have to.
So I certainly don't wanna limit discussion, but is there any other questions on?
But I'm going to.
But I will, yeah, I'm moving us along, sorry people, but, um. So there's been a motion and a second for reduction on the eighty, the eighty-nine to eighty-five Chromebooks for twelve hundred dollars. So all those in favor of reducing that line item, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. Staying, fails one, three, zero.
On page two, it's really gonna be the same motion on line seven thirty-four, but for a freshman class. There are ninety-nine Chromebooks, well, I'll make the motion to your mic. I will motion to reduce line seven thirty-four by twenty-seven hundred dollars.
There's a motion, is there a second? Hearing none, motion does not continue.
Um, next up is more, um, kind of that holistic approach. And as presented this, uh, this evening, when we look at bottoms up versus tops down. And when we look at tops down and specifically traveling conferences in lines two seventy-two and five eighty, traveling conference tab, if you're referring to the various worksheets in the, in the budget book that you have. You'll note that fiscal year twenty-four, our current budget, for travel and conferences across, we're at fifty-six thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. In fiscal year twenty-five, we're asking for seventy thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. And over the past several years, we've been anywhere between twenty thousand and forty thousand, again, COVID's in there, so it fluctuates. I'm going to make a motion to, let me go back to that tab, to reduce traveling conferences across the entire budget by twenty thousand dollars.
I'll second for discussion.
I have a question on that. Holly, does that include travel and workshop reimbursement for teachers for the LEA contract and the LSSA contract?
I mean, technically, it would, um, under the LSSA contract. So the LSSA contract is a two seventy-two line, um, and that is, I mean, that's obligated by.
Required by the.
Required by the contract.
But that's no different than past years. It's been the same contract.
Yes, but their contract has changed. So in the past, there hasn't been a set amount on their contract. There is now, so in the past, if the board cut it, we weren't as obligated to pay it, if that makes sense. It was as available. Now, in the new contract, we have a pool that has to be double the amount that was spent in the previous year. So that is one of the areas like that in my budget, it has increased because by the contract language, we spent X amount last year, we have to double that for this year as the pool for the LSSA. So that is one of the areas that would not be able to be touched.
So outside of obligation, um, you know, we're having trouble recruiting. I do think that this is something that, you know, when you invest in your employees, you know, continued growth, I do think that that's something that people look for in looking for jobs. The other component that I heard that particularly resonated with me, maybe because I'm a lawyer, was that the, you know, specifically the law conference was very, very beneficial.
Yep.
And I don't.
We heard that from, from here.
Right, and with how, and how busy you, you all are, I, I mean, I don't know that we would sufficiently be able to gather all of that information and disseminate that information amongst our staff without some of this, uh, professional development, so. I'm hesitant, I, I, you know, again, recognize that we need to cut places, but this seems like something that's really.
The three and four-year average is thirty thousand dollars.
Can I, can I just?
But those are COVID years, right?
But I'm setting it to fifty.
It is, it is COVID. I will also say that we have taken on some, um, at the, at the will of the board as well. We've taken on some contracts. In my first few years here, Title II, which is a professional learning grant that we have access to, was pretty wide open. Um, we have used that money over the last few years, uh, almost completely to do things like responsive classroom training. This year, it's going to help support the rest of the culture and climate training that we've been doing. So we've been using that pool for some of the bigger-ticket things that we've committed to as a district without having to put them in the budget. So I know for myself, my line is up thirty-one hundred. That's the district line for professional learning. So that is anything above and be, if I wanna send teachers to a conference that I'm requesting that they go to, or admin to a conference that I'm requesting they go to, it should come from that line. Um, and that is not a whole lot of money to play with, which is.
And what I would say, I would say that is twenty thousand more than what you guys currently spend.
And, and I would say if we were not spending our grant money on bigger-ticket items, it wouldn't be an issue.
I'd also question in terms of, when we specifically asked you guys to buckle down.
I cut that line.
It came at a, you guys cut, that, that was one of the first lines cut, um, to say that, you know, in, we need supplies, but we'll cut down on this, and we'll do more Zooms, or we'll do more.
I, I will, I will tell you for myself personally, as the person that oversees most district curriculum PD, in FY twenty, I, and I can't look back, cause it only goes to twenty-one, um, on my paper that I have in front of me. But my initial budget was like fifteen thousand dollars. I wanna say seventeen, that's what's in my head, but I'm not confident in that number. So, and I've cut it back to five thousand over the last couple of years, which is a huge decrease. And we've been able to supple- supplement a lot of that with title funds. But again, last year and this year, those title funds have gone to bigger-ticket items that have used most of that grant without us being able to put any of that into.
The other piece, what I think we're hearing is that student behaviors are changing pretty significantly. Um, and we're gonna hear more about it on, at our board meeting next week. But as Dr. Jettie mentioned in one of his meetings, he had a meeting with a group of employees who were very clear. had a meeting with a group of employees who were very clear about how much the behavior is changing, how much things are different than what they're used to, and um professional development's gonna be required in order to help them be able to cope with these new behaviors. And I, I want them to be able to have the resources to do it. So I, I'm not in favor of cutting this line item.
I believe that's different, training is different than a conference.
I, I think it's top down, as people are saying.
If I, if we bring in a trainer, um, I, I have zero money in a line to bring in a trainer, so if I bring in a trainer to work with our staff, it comes out of that line.
Can I also chime in, that that line also helps with certifications? So if you want to maintain your principal certification, your teacher certification, there's a certain amount of professional development that's required, some that can be offered within the district. Um, but there are places where that becomes much more difficult, especially when you're looking for specific certifications, that you need to have things that are in that category in order to qualify. There are things that cover under general for professional development and professional learning. Um, but there is some benefit to going to outside conferences to get outside perspective to bring back.
And for the, for the admin, that's sometimes the only PD we get during the year. We lead PD in the building. You know, we collaborate with Mary, but that's some of the only PD we get at all is that two-day conference in Portsmouth or, you know, some, that's, that's the only PD we get as principals. And so when, when we're tasked to improve test scores, when we're tasked to change what learning looks like in, in the district, and when we're tasked to, you know, get these behaviors and, and the changing students, that's what we go to these conferences for, is to get that professional development.
And unlike the teacher's contract that has money built in, so if we don't have money, a teacher can say, okay, well, I'm gonna pay for it and request reimbursement, we don't have that option as administrators. And we all have, for most of us, we don't have one certification, most of us have three, four, five certifications. So there's a lot of hours that we need to get with not a huge pool of money to be able to.
All right, there's a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing done, all those in favor of reducing the traveling conference line item by twenty thousand dollars, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Abstain.
Clarification, you keep referring to it as traveling conference.
That's what's.
It's conference and workshop and then travel's a different, are we talking about the two seventy-two?
We're talking about two seventy-two and five eighty.
So it was a combined, it was a?
It was combined.
Okay. I didn't know if we're gonna get to five eighty later, that's why.
Uh, we'll move on to supplies, and this is line six ten. Uh, line six, well, I'll make a motion to reduce supplies bottom line by fifteen thousand six ninety.
Is there a second? Okay, hearing done.
Miscellaneous, I'll make a motion to do a bottom line cut of miscellaneous of nine thousand three hundred and forty dollars.
I'm gonna second for discussion, I really, I would rather not have to address these as motions, but that's fine. Can you tell, like, can you tell me more about what you're thinking on that?
Sure. So similar discussion, right, when I look at three-year and four-year averages, we're right around thirty-five to thirty-six K. Uh, this year, we're budgeting fifty-four thousand, my motion is to set it to forty-five thousand, which is ten thousand higher than the three and four-year averages.
So I guess my, my question is, you know, we've seen the cost of everything go up drastically. And what was put in front of us was proposals based off of numbers that they've gone out and gathered ba- based off of, you know, metrics using, factoring those things in as opposed to doing just, you know, straight line, like, okay, well, let's try to pick something that's more in line with, with the prior years. But my question is, are we accurately capturing like the increase in cost and need that they've presented to us in their budgets, just by picking numbers that are, you know?
Look, we're gonna have to make hard choices, and I think the fact of the matter of this board is we have a lot of big-ticket items that we're planning for for March. If we don't get this budget down, the reality of getting all those passed is slim. I'm trying to make a conscious effort that there are other top-of-line priorities for all of us. And I think we're gonna be shooting ourselves in the foot if we don't make hard decisions now. We have to start making hard decisions.
I can appreciate that. I, but I think it's worth, it's worth.
That, that's where these motions, they're not hitting anybody against anybody, they're not because of need, it's because we have to, in our seed, we have to start to make these tough, difficult decisions in order to get this operating budget down to a reasonable level that we can get behind and support with the taxpayer supporting it as well.
I disagree with that. Our responsibility is to make sure that our schools have what they need to operate. And I think, I think in the last five years, frankly, that gap of, you know, how much we spend for people and the state average has widened every single year. You know, not knowing exactly what the miscellaneous line items.
So I'll tell you, n- ninety percent of my miscellaneous budget is graduation.
Right, so, I mean, that's, that's the kind of the danger between, you know, I appreciate your analysis. By going, by going top-down instead of bottom-up, as you put it, we lose a lot of what exactly that.
The context.
Right, the context of where that goes, so thank you for that input, I mean, that, that really helps.
I just leaned over to Jake, cause I wanted to know what his was, cause I'm like, how did it get so high, cause my miscellaneous is thirteen hundred, so. I didn't know how we got to over the thirty. So I was kinda wondering where that all came from.
Mine is a combination of achievement award, pins, certificates, and plaques. And as I've mentioned before, those wonderful plaques are super expensive. Um, and that's a tradition for LMS, one we're working on leaning out, but I feel like if I don't give that to this outgoing group of eighth graders, there could be mutiny on the out date, but.
Yeah, I mean, the big, the big driver here is Campbell, there's no question about that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's gone from ten thousand, eleven thousand, to now twenty-three thousand.
But that's, and that's graduation costs, right, I assume chair rentals are more expensive, and I mean, it's just the cost of i- i- it's inflation, it's just the general cost of it, I don't think we can and should ask our students to have le- less of a graduation. Um, because we're in.
All right, I'll call the question.
All right.
Well, all right.
There's no, I mean, I, I already can read the board, there's no sense in continuing.
Well, I don't think you're accurately reading the board, or at least not accurately reading me.
Okay.
Because what you didn't know what I was about to say was, I don't fully agree. Um, I think that the point that Andrew makes is a very important point that we have to figure out. I, I don't think we could just cut, 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 without impacting what you're saying. Um, but I also do think that we don't achieve anything if we don't get a budget passed. We don't, we, we have not yet seen teacher contracts. I think that the things that Andrew's alluding to coming up, like, they're gonna have a hu- huge impact on whether or not we can get people to support. And so I don't disagree with Andrew that that is something that we need to talk about, I think there's, I think there's a I'd, I'd, I'd rather talk about it than say, okay, well, this is what we need to do, because I think that at the same time, you know, if you're gonna cut that, okay, so what do you propose, and, and, and there's not answers to everything. What do you propose with respect to, to graduation, cause it's not, we can't just say, okay, cut it, and good luck Jake, you can figure it out. Right, like, that's, we can't do that either, that's not a responsible thing for us to do.
But that's what, that's, I'll say traditionally, last year. I mean, that's what happens, it's, it's a bottom-line budget, we'll cut from here and, and figure it out.
But I, but I, as a board, I think that we at least need to vocalize either, y- you know, yes, I want, I want you to cut that, right? We can't just say, well, we need to find a way to do it, and it, but it's not on us, right? And I feel like that's a little bit of, you know, just saying, let's cut it, but I don't think you should cut, I, I, I like graduation, but so, I mean, are we saying, is the position, yes, we think you need to cut back on graduation?
I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying that it can come maybe from other decisions within that miscellaneous line. And that it's up to the district to then determine what is a priority within the miscellaneous line across the entire district.
Yeah, but I think that if, if we're gonna get into that though, and we're gonna say, cut it, I think that we as a board should at least be acknowledging where that needs to come from.
I mean, I, I think the points are well-taken, honestly, across the board, I, I, I think I hear what you're saying, Andrew, I don't agree with this particular cut, I haven't agreed with a lot of the particular cuts, that doesn't mean that I'm not I'm not open to discussing where there should be cuts, however, I'm also cognizant of the big picture and I under, I understand, we're asking a lot of taxpayers this year.
You sure are.
Yeah.
Can I offer a cut? I know this is dumb to do from the side of the aisle, but I'm gonna do it anyway. To match Dan, can I go down to say, cut my um seven thirty-seven line uh by three thousand four hundred and seventy-four dollars to go to, instead of two classrooms of tables and chairs, to one classroom of tables and chairs, for equity's sake?
Very much appreciated.
We, how'd you get away with it?
We have, we, we have a current motion that.
Yeah, we'll, we'll think about that.
Um, I, I, I would rather have that conversation, I think it's, I know it's more time-consuming. I would rather at least just dig into it and say, you know, yeah, let's do that, I'd rather know that we're having that back and forth and I'm with you, I think we do have to make some, we, we can't just say, here it, here it all is, and let it all fail, like, I, I don't wanna see that happen either, so.
Where we're on our track.
Well, but I think one of the pieces I was gonna speak to Doug and Mike about, and maybe I can take the time to do it this weekend, one of the things I thought that was really helpful with last year's budget was the presentation where we literally said, here are the, the total amount it's increased, and here by dollar amount is the driver, so
Yeah.
Transportation, special education out of district placement, you know, we go through and say, this is how much is there, this is what those add up to. I think that's the piece for the overall thinking I need to wrap my head around, because I don't see these small items as being the problem, the problem is the large increase in transportation. That is, it, it's a contract year with transportation, it's a contract year with LEA, I mean, it is just all poor timing that it's coming and hitting the fan at once, basically.
But I do think that Andrew has done a, a really good job of tr- trying to find things that had, that when combined did have a hundred twenty-three thousand dollar, if we all voted on all those things.
Yeah.
Obviously, there are some big consequences associated with some of these.
Well, the proposed list, are you talking about Andrew's proposed list?
No, the budget reductions that we already made were a hundred and twenty.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong number, what was, well, the rest of it still adds up pretty substantially if you add these things up.
Right.
Can I just chime in?
What was the motion again?
The motion was
Cut miscellaneous.
Miscellaneous by nine thousand three hundred and thirty dollars.
And what was the last year's spend?
Last year's spend on miscellaneous, one second, let me go back there, was thirty thousand nine eighty-five.
And this year it's?
We budgeted fifty thousand, and that's what I'm proposing, keep it up.
Looking at the way that, I, I mean, I, just looking at CHS, which we know is the biggest budget driver in miscellaneous. Excuse me. Those are all things that are very traditional in this town, and we also know as a board the town is very
Traditional.
Traditional, they want, you know, we've had.
Calling me traditional?
I'm not calling, I'm not calling you tradi- I'm calling the town traditional, Andrew. Um, so I think we know that very often we've made, you know, if you make a cut, we've had to look at it and say, okay, well, I guess that means we're not gonna do plaques for LMS this year, because that's where the cut came from, and then
You got an earful.
We get near full at the board level, and suddenly we're trying to find money to, to, to do that. So I would just ask if you are going to support a cut at that level, be specific about it, because when it comes, it, not for nothing, but if you guys say, no, we don't support the plaques at the middle school, when it comes back to you.
Well, I don't think that's, I think that it's not saying that, I think it's
No.
If, if we're saying, if we're saying, we need you to make cuts, and this is where we think that they should come from, I, I, that's.
And that's why we do the bottoms up, right, and that's why this is so hard, like, we, we tried that approach. We all said, yeah, you know what, your requests make sense, but at the end of the day, and taking a look at it tough, we have to make tough decisions, so where are we gonna do it from?
But I, but again, right, but again, I just think that if, if we're gonna ask it, we should be willing to engage in a little bit further detail as to where we think it should come from, as opposed to just, you have this, you know, there's, what is it, like twenty-five, thirty items in this category, like, you know? Flowers and decorations for graduation, five, fifty, like, I, I mean, if we feel like that's worth saying, then I think we should say that. Which makes all of the work you've done that much harder, because it's, it makes us go in a lot further.
Yeah.
But it also saves us from having to do what we've had to do a number of times in the past, which is say, okay, well, we're gonna cut it. And then have to find money for it.
It's a risk for you guys to do that anyways, cause to your point, it's a bottom-line budget.
Of course, of course.
So I'm gonna go ahead and move forward with the vote on this one, so we have the reminder of the vote is to cut nine thousand three hundred and forty dollars from miscellaneous. All those in favor of this motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Abstain. Fails one, three, zero.
So I just sent to the board, um, and it's about a w- week old, so it hasn't been updated, the main budget drivers, it's now part of your fiscal year twenty-five budget changes, which you've had access to.
Yeah.
And so I just resent it to you, so it went to the top of your email. But there's a tab now at the bottom, again, not updated since we went from nine buses to eight buses, and we went from ten percent um for healthcare to six point two percent, but a lot of the stuff is, is static from before.
Yeah, I think that's what's important for us to understand, is the major drivers of this budget are, you can see the percentages, right, special ed, out-of-district placement, special ed transportation, the healthcare, which is gonna be reduced, attrition, special ed, professional services, and then regular transportation.
But to Andrew's credit, I, I don't think that that negates the reality, which is we have to put very big numbers in front of people, so I do think it's responsible for us to be doing what Andrew's, to look, be looking at Andrew, what Andrew's asking.
Certainly.
But I do think that if we're gonna, I would feel more comfortable going in and saying these are the specific places that we think that you could make cuts, as opposed to just here, good luck.
Yeah.
I just think it's, it was already a very, very big budget that was presented to us. See a lot of room for two seven seven eight eighty-two, the total, taking off of seven thirty-seven.
All right, well, we're still, no, we're not on this motion anymore.
I'm done with motions this evening.
Okay, we're done with motions for this evening, um, are there other motions from the remainder of the board?
So Mr. Cullen, in summary, for tonight, budget reductions, not including food service, I have ninety-eight thousand seven sixty-eight.
From tonight?
Yes. Do you wanna do it all together?
No.
That's easier for you?
No, so again, how much you have?
Just for tonight, not including food service, ninety-eight thousand seven six eight.
Seven six eight.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then food service is four thousand four twenty-seven.
That is correct, that's what I also have.
So our total reductions between yesterday and today, two hundred and thirty-three thousand five ten forty and forty cents.
Are there any other general questions, I mean, I think we definitely have started to get into the general conversation of the catch with all of this, the balance. Um, and I don't know that we're gonna come up with the right answer tonight, but we def, we've had these conversations, I think they've been good conversations. I don't in any way, Andrew, want you to think that I'm disrespecting any of the work that you've done.
Disrespect taken, just trying to move it along.
Um, no, no, but I, I don't think it's irresponsible at all for you to bring these, and have these discussions, I think it's important. Just because I don't agree with them doesn't mean I don't think it's an important discussion.
So in the interest of, you know, you know, trying to have the conversations about what Andrew was talking about, um, there was one, so there were, there were a few posi- there was one position that I hate to bring this up, right, so I, I don't, I don't wanna be the bad guy here. Um, and I'm trying to find. I hate to bring this up, right, so I, I don't, I don't wanna be the bad guy here, um, and I'm trying to find the position, um, there was the. Yep, that was the one. We can consolidate and have one principal for all three schools. I think the middle school can run itself without a principal, it seems like it's going, um, no, so, um. It was, and I'm trying, I, I can't find it, but it was the. Instructional coach. I think that that's a wonderful position, I, and I think that a lot of districts have way more than one of those. And I don't doubt that we need that, or that, that we would benefit from that, if we're looking.
Here, it's not added in the budget.
So it's not in the budget?
They've presented it, but it's not in the budget.
Oh, I, I thought that was in the budget.
Would be a separate warrant article.
As long as, I was just gonna say, I'd, I'd like to see that.
So we do have one more motion for tonight that has been generously offered up by LMS.
The department principal, no, that was.
But I wanna make sure I have, what is the reduction amount?
So the reduction amount, sorry, I had to look at the quote to go back to that, I gave you a little more than I thought I did in the first go. Uh, subtract two seven seven eight eighty-two. From seven thirty-seven.
Two seven eight.
Eighty-two, so I would like to make a motion to subtract two thousand seven hundred seventy-eight dollars and eighty-two cents. From line item, help me, seven thirty-seven. Seven thirty-seven.
Page one.
Page one.
I'll second.
From the LMS budget, thank you.
Mr. Ratham, I understood from your, the reason why you were spared from my initial motions. Was the compelling argument with pictures. That clearly showed broken, disrepair, need of dire replacement. Kids getting hurt on the furniture, all this jazz.
Would that same logic work with the bond? I got plenty of those.
All, all of that is true, I, I appreciate that, Andrew, and I appreciate the, uh, the feedback on that, we, we have places. Where that is a thousand percent true, I, I think the one place where we can Frankenstein together a classroom that works and functions. Is in that, you know, we'll move one, one group together this year, and then next year, somebody else will get one, so it's that, that gradual replacement. You know, the other places that I have in there, it is a question of broken, you know, I'm not, I didn't ask to remove the science. Stools that I showed you the pictures of, those are dangerous, those are broken, those are cutting kids' hands, I didn't ask to remove the music chairs. Which are original to the building. And they're dangerous, they, they hurt, when you open them the wrong way, your hands get stuck in them, so, those are things I didn't remove from there, but. I'm, I'm about teamwork and I'm about responsibility to the taxpayer, we're, we're presenting a budget that we can. Try to live with, and I think we presented, in my experience here, this is my third budget season. We did really lean, super lean, and now this year we went with, this would be okay, we could tolerate this, we could handle this. And I think that that's, I'm offering that up as something we can live with.
Very much appreciate that, because I think that, like I said before, I think that moving towards, I, I don't disagree with you that we need to get. To a place where we are appropriately spending on education, we are still very close to a lot of deep wounds that were caused by. Prior issues, and unfortunately, we have to continue to make, repave the way, I think. And I, I very much appreciate that, so, thank you.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second, all those in favor of reducing the LMS budget line item seven thirty-seven by two thousand seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And eighty-two cents, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye, just speaking on.
So spiteful. Alright, it passes, three, one, zero.
That was awesome.
Note to self, alright.
Budget we presented in all pictures.
Well, that's what you need to do for GMS, time to break out the camera.
He's starting, draw, he's drawing back here, so this is my.
This is the bird that flew in.
Alright folks, so I think for tonight, we're gonna call it, I appreciate everyone.
Can I ask one, one more thing? So we are meeting as an admin team on Monday afternoon, so if there's something that the, the board thinks they would rather have us think about a little bit more. Um, if you wanna email us or let us know tonight, that would be good, um, because we wanna make sure that we're prepared to give you the information that you need in order to make decisions.
Attrition is the one I wanna hear more about, because I know that's gonna be a big topic of conversation, there was attrition cut last year.
And food service.
I wanna understand that a little bit more.
Um, I also had a question too about the default, when do we, when do we typically get that?
Um, so I'm working on that now, so possibly by the school board meeting next week, it depends on. How the, the rest, it, it shouldn't be that much longer.
Yeah. That, that comes into some of the decisions that we make too, that, that comes into play.
I mean, I share my thoughts with yourselves, Mr. Totten, as well as the superintendent and the board, right, the big items that I'm still thinking through are certainly the, the, the positions. Again, um, I'm thinking through attrition, most certainly, I'm thinking through, uh, the open vacant positions. Carrying that over year to year and what the board's thoughts are there, that's, that's a big item, I'm thinking about special education, right? And I'm also thinking about, uh, what's the other big one?
The food service?
Yeah, and food service, thank you, I just mentioned that, yeah, and food service, and what's the, like, that's why December sixth and your presentation to us is gonna be critically important, right? Because if we need to increase rates, what is that right balance, what's the right rate, I don't know that this district can afford to support a hundred thousand dollars a year to year and carry that.
I get it.
Right, but I also don't know what's the appetite to raise rates to be the highest in our areas.
Those, I think, are the areas that we're gonna really get into on Wednesday, so if we can have a little bit more information, so. Again, I think there's a proposal to cut a hundred and fifty, or at least there's a discussion about maybe cutting a hundred and fifty.
Discussions, it's just a thought.
A, a thought, fine, all the thoughts, there's a thought, I wanna know the impact, so, that's what I'm trying to understand, yeah.
Bring up just a resolved issue, just because Jake and I were going through and trying to figure out how miscellaneous got so hot, the eight ninety got so high. And we just, the fourteen thousand in the Medicaid billing that was removed last night.
That's in the miscellaneous?
Yeah, because we're trying, we're looking at our numbers going, how did that number get?
Any of the motions that we made last night are not reflected in any of these.
Okay, so I just wanted, for the. Eight ninety's already down fourteen, yeah.
Good to know.
We went to Encyclopedia Brown here, because we're like, what, where'd that ever go from?
It's all in your calls.
Break a sweat.
Alright, any other questions or comments for tonight?
Just one summary, because we made another motion, total reduction last night, tonight, two thirty-six, two eighty-nine and twenty-two cents. Two hundred thirty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-nine dollars and twenty-two cents.
Can I make a motion to add twenty-two cents back into the budget?
No, second, alright.
Second.
All those in favor? Alright, we are done, okay, so I didn't stick to seven o'clock, but seven forty's not so bad.